Where are you coming from?
Uh, I'm ordering research.
Okay.
Research.
Motion to come back.
I'll make a motion that we go with Greg and Michelle.
All vote. Thank you, ma'am.
Just want to tell us about that. Greg and Michelle talk to you about that.
Yes, Sheriff needed you to acquire some fencing down there at the Sheriff's Department for some impound vehicles, a little more secure lot. And get that going right away. There was some recent.
Impounds.
Impounds. And get that up and running. He got some quotes and Kim has that information she's passing out to you all right now.
Just one estimate is all that would come in and he couldn't get one more to give them an estimate.
Would not provide. They wasn't able to get an estimate in on me for whatever reason. But this one is.
He has the money in his impound fees, money.
Is anything needed to be done to the grounds, like smoothing it or gravel or any kind of crap like that?
This will actually be on the paving, on the pavement. He wants to do it from the.
Back of the building?
No, he wants to do it from the only to the curb. From the side of the building where the only is.
Okay.
To the curb where he can drive the cars in. That will leave the front of the building open to parking. You just couldn't drive around the sheriff's building. You would have access to park in the front of the sheriff's building on that side. You just couldn't drive around it.
But it does not interfere with the ingress there from the gas station. They'll still have that full range to be able to come in and out of that on the beat.
Definitely you need somewhere else. If that counter don't work, everything put in there just by over the set of cars, whatever.
Yes.
Okay, we take a motion.
Yeah, if you want to allow that fencing to be installed and be used, well, I made a motion to allow this to be used.
I'll make a motion that we use his impound funds to put up the fencing that he's requested for impound vehicles.
Do we have a second?
Say.
I'll vote. Any votes? Do we have something else we need to?
If you want to skip the budget and go into clothes and take care of that first. Then, I'm not sure what he's.
That when you didn't address Paul or something, or you just kind of?
I'm just here to see what's going on.
We do have closed items to take care of, so I didn't know if y'all wanted to go on with the budget, or did you want to take care of the closed item first? I don't think it will take too long, but that is something to deal with.
We're probably next year to take clothes, whether anybody?
It's just personnel.
Okay.
Do we want the motion to go in clothes?
So moved.
Lay it off.
Ready to die, man?
Lay it off. We're ready.
Very little brain lift, okay. First of all, since we've got new board members, I'm going to kind of give you just a really two, one minute overview of the process that I go through and Greg goes through when we're building to get to this point where there's a book, okay? The first thing we do is, as I've already related, is we have a budget, kind of a budget workshop with the department managers to get feels from them as far as any new challenges, new grants, or money being taken away, or problems with equipment that's going to be dealt with, blah, blah. And then I have a template document, it's an Excel workbook that I send out to each department manager. Before I send it out, I spend considerable amount of time going through each general manager, year to date, for each department. And I get trends on things like utilities and office supplies and things like that to give them a sense of what is out there, okay? Now, there's two budgets that are massive budgets, and that is the DSS budget and the Health Department budget. And a lot of their budgets are driven by their revenue streams, okay? Because we've talked a lot about how DSS works and so forth. But each department manager gets those trends, so they kind of know what their, kind of their overhead is running, okay? And then if there's debt service that's related to their department, like for instance, this EMS has a debt payment, or the emergency management has a debt payment on this building. I go ahead and preload and pre-populate as much of that information for them as possible, make it as easy as I can. I also create a salary template where I tell them, this is where we are, here's ground zero. And then they will go through their template and may tweak it and may change it. Some of the departments come back with raises, some of them come back with a capital outlay, blah, blah. So what I send to them doesn't necessarily reflect what I get back. When I get all the templates back, then I go into our system and I load their request in just exactly like they give it back to me, okay? And there's some discussion back and forth because if I see that they're asking for something that's not really reflective, then we'll call and we'll talk and we'll work it out between us. That brings me to what I call my first run through, and I see how bad the shortfall is, because there's always a shortfall. And in the meantime, I'm working on the revenue streams, projecting what I know and what I think's going to be coming in for the year. Of course, a lot of that, too, if it's like transit or EDSs, they already know what their grants, for the most part, what grants they're expecting to come in, what those levels are, what the matches are, and I try to preload all of that stuff in. Then, once I get through my first run, see how bad the shortfall is, then I begin to whittle away and figure out things and, you know, how can I get it from a million dollars to less than a million dollars, okay? That being said, the product of what you're going to look at this evening and what you're going to be working with the next few days, or however many evenings you want to work, is this notebook. A lot of things I've got questions about, because a lot of times I need to hear your view of what we need to deal with. This year it's going to be a little bit more tedious because we've got a revow we're working with and we've already kind of laid that groundwork. That being said, we're going to go through some things this evening, and then we're going to talk about how we're going to approach going through your departments, okay? Now, I kind of took Lynn's idea. He kind of got me to the side the other evening and he said, let's look at it from a kind of a functional standpoint. Let's look at all the general government at one time, public safety, you know, human services, so that, so your notebook, if you've done a budget with me before, it's going to look a little bit different. And I think, in a way, it's probably a better approach, so I was excited to kind of start thinking along these lines. So as you're looking at things, you're looking at kind of more of a functional level as far as a departmental level, okay? All right, that being said, if you want to flip in your books, we're going to go through the notes and overview first, okay? And the first page here is kind of, this is the tail end of a 115-page report. I didn't print all the 115 pages because I didn't want to bore, you're going to see them in your notebook. But I'm going to point you to where we wound up, okay? We budgeted last year, and I have a key punch error that I've got to go find my $620. I went into the wrong budget and posted something, and I don't have time to find it, folks, but I will get it back in balance.
But that's zero, isn't it?
It should be zero. 1379383 was our budget for 1415, okay? You see that original budget column? You're going to want to look, as we go through these departments, you're going to want to look at these, that column, as we go through these columns on the right-hand side, okay? Now, right now, actually what our activity is right now, through like today, but the request, you'll notice, it's the second from the right, requested, we show a shortfall in the request column of $927,831, okay? That is as it's been requested from the departments, okay? Within that 900,000 dollars, there are some raises put in. I went ahead, we were able to get our health insurance quote ahead this year, so the department's already knew what that figure was supposed to be. There are some raises, and as we flip through, you're going to see there's quite a bit of capital outlay in that, about a half a million dollars, okay? Of what the departments feel like the needs are this year for capital outlay, and don't fret, because I'm going to show that to you in just a minute. The recommended for right now is a shortfall of about $345,000. But that is because I felt like this year, so that we can become more intentional about our capital planning, that we needed to kind of pull that out so that we can make some decisions and prioritize capital planning a little bit better this year, instead of it all being kind of muddled up into the mix. Because when you're dealing with 115 pages worth of numbers, it can kind of get muddy, okay? All right? And then that is leaving compensation where it is right now, okay? And if I had more department managers here, I'd be, you know, kind of dodging the rotten tomatoes, okay? At this point, okay? But that, but that does, this is budgeting in, because we all know that we have a 16% increase in health insurance premiums this year, okay? That is budgeting in for that, okay? So that increases in there. So at this point, we're looking, if the board doesn't decide to do anything with capital outlay or compensation, which we can, if you guys want to, we can look at, I've got, back in the very back, I've got everybody's compensation, their pay rates, what they got on their W-2 this year, this past year in '14, so you can get a full, what their benefits were, so you can get a full picture of what our compensation is running as accounting, okay? And I'll show you that here in just a minute, okay? So any questions so far? So as we go through these departments, you're going to, we're going to be looking at the requests and the recommendations, and then we're going to be backing that and seeing, well, how does that compare to what we budgeted last year, okay? And have we had, you know, we've got some departments that spiked up, most of the departments are staying pretty level if you don't do any, if you don't do any compensation changes this year, okay? And the reason that I pull that out is because it's ultimately up to the board, not me or Greg or anybody sitting here from admin to make those decisions. That's a decision I want the board to parse through and decide, okay? Any questions so far?
The 345 does include the recommendations made by the sheriff?
Yes, again, I'm glad you mentioned that. Now, I did not touch in the recommendation, I'm glad you, I told you guys I'm brain-dead. I've been getting about four hours of sleep a night. This does include, I left the sheriff budget and the jail budget just as they requested. And I did make a couple of technical corrections to the jail based on what they had asked for for health insurance and retirement, but I left their budget as is, as they've requested it, okay? And you'll see that on a worksheet here in just a minute. Because I do not feel it's the finance officer's responsibility to make those decisions. He's an elected official, and I don't like to mess with his notes, okay? The next page is what has been requested by the departments for capital outlay, okay? And as I said, it's right at half a million dollars. The election board is looking at, and of course, they did say this, that they don't know if it's going to be mandatory for this budget year, but they do say that within the next year or two, the state is probably going to require throwing machines to be purchased. That's 44 point, 44 and a half, or 44,500. We will be needing to buy an ambulance, okay?
Can we go back to the voting?
Yes, yes.
I know Greg has heard some of the discussion in Raleigh about, a lot of the counties who bought the paperless voting apparatuses are, they are now being forced to go back to paper. So the last I heard about it was that there could be some delay on this move.
Right, right.
It's sort of a moving target right now.
Yeah.
And some counties are, in fact, saying, we're on our way to the state makes up their mind.
Yeah. And so, but it's out there, okay? And I'm not saying that these are all things that have to be bought this coming year, but it's out there, okay? It's in the budget request for this coming year, but it may be stuff that perhaps, if we get, you know, better information or whatever, that we can say, okay, well, we know it's going to be on that list for what's coming up. Okay, an ambulance is going to have to be bought, and what we've been doing, as you guys know, is buying those remounts, and they're running about $95,000. If we time this correctly, and the reason that I'm saying this is, right now, for this budget year, we're closing out, and for next budget year, we got three debt payments on three ambulances. And the reason for that is because they were put off and pushed off and pushed off, and then we got in a bind and we had to buy three, you know, two, one of those payments has fallen off after this coming year, okay? If we time it right, then I don't ever want to have more than two payments at a time if I can stand it, okay? Because the debt service alone and the ambulance EMS is like $120,000 right now for ambulance payments. If we order one like in December or January, we can take delivery on one in like June or July, and then your debt payment won't be due to the next budget year. So it's kind of a matter of playing a game. I'm kind of good at playing games. Good to be poor drilling, though. Okay, the Health Department has asked for a vehicle, they included $28,000 in their budget. The Sheriff, the best guess we could get from a memo that they sent out back in February, they've asked for three cars and around $100,000. Now, in their budget request, the capital outlay request was $132,000. EMS is saying that at some point in the near future, cardiac monitor or monitors are going to have to be replaced at about $120,000. Sanitation, we've already kind of talked about this when we had our budget workshop. They're thinking that they can overhaul the pit, and then they need to replace the beds of the two big trucks, because they say that they're rusted out.
Repair them.
Repair, yeah, repair them, for a total of 60. DSS is asking for a $25,000 vehicle. Now, if that's handled appropriately, we would get about two-thirds of that back through the 1571, if they do what they're supposed to do. Maping is asking for a server, because the new GIS photos are coming out, they're going to be high, high definition, and they're saying that what, the server we've got right now is about 10 years old, and it may have to be replaced pretty soon. The KIP in here, we bought the lease out two years ago on the KIP, but it's beginning to have a lot of problems. You can lease one of those for $313 a month, and that's the best way to handle those KIPs because they get off the lease, they're like computers, and you get a service contract for $37.56. And then Recreation has asked for bleachers, because they have to use the ones that are Heritage Festival bleachers that get hauled off and beat up and whatever for their ball fields, okay? So that basically comes up to $492,000, okay? Which, I always try to take an equivalent, and I've got it to the 10,000th on the meal rate. It would basically cost five cents on a meal rate to pay cash for all of this, okay? Our meal rate right now is 46, okay? Any questions on this? Okay, so I always try to figure out, well, what makes my number it? How, you know, how, how do I parse out what is, how am I coming up with this $345,000 or $928,000 shortfall? Okay, the first part of that is, and you'll see this here in just a second, even if we stay at revenue neutral, which a few weeks ago I told you is like 52 and three-quarters, okay, a little bit more than that. My revenue that I'm going to be able to book on my budget for my tax levy is $50,000 less when I do the calculations than what I actually levied this last year. And the reason for that is that we lost tax base, even though, I mean, not just through the revow, but we actually, when you compare apples to apples, we actually lost about $10 million in tax base through PUVs, through conservation easements, through losing the equipment at Stanley, all of that, it added up. And so we lost about that much tax base. So part of that shortfall is about $50,000 in property taxes. Now, two years or three years ago, we decided that we were going to do the right thing and collect all these back taxes, which we've done a real good job, but that means I don't have that much pool to be pulling on as much, so I had to drop my estimated revenue on what I would be getting in back taxes, about $25,000, the best I could project, okay? Now, this time last year in the budget, the board voted to buy three Dodge Chargers, okay? And they also voted to go ahead and get this computer network system going and getting it upgraded, okay? The debt service on that, because that, those debt payments are coming up due this budget year that we're getting ready to budget for, is right at $95,000, okay? Which is one cent on the meal, basically, okay? Now, the Sheriff and the Jail, when you look, when we look at those budgets, you're going to see what the budget was for this budget year we're closing versus what their request is. The Sheriff's request came in an increase of about $98,000, and the Jail budget about $82,000. So most of our, pretty much all of our shortfall is made up of these five components. Same thing here with the capital outlay in it, we still are coming up with around what we would be asking for to buy if we were going to buy everything that's on the wish list, okay? So going back to capital outlay, she, you know, what the board's going to need to do is try to prioritize and maybe figure out, well, how much can we afford to do this year versus next year, okay? And then the reason I say that and pay cash for it, because, you know, we've got some pretty good-sized debt projects we're going to be thinking about doing, we got to, I'm hoping that Pam Ha Sung is going to help us and get that USDA loan closed really soon, and then, once I get that closed, I'll be able to start on the, get the financing finalized on the Sheriff Department, we're going to have that debt service to deal with, and then if we do any more capital projects, we got to think forward, and I don't want to be cluttering up my debt much more, my, what I call my little debt, when I'm trying to sweet-talk banks on interest rates and such. Any questions there? Let's look at our tax rate for just a few minutes. I always like, you know, accountants or nothing, if we're not good historians. And so I went back into history, so, because I wanted to see where we've been and what we've been doing since I've been here. Okay, the first budget that I worked under, I didn't build because Lynn built it, and at that point, that was the last budget before the last revow came into effect. And the tax rate at that point was 58 cents, okay? There's where your tax rate was. At the revow, you'll remember, we got in a really bad place. They did the revow and all the property values were way up there, it was when the bubble was about to burst, and we got in a really bad spot because everything was booked in on the revow with property being way overvalued and it, and then, of course, the bubble burst and people's, their property wasn't worth near anything, but we had to deal with that revow. And what happened is because the property values went up, the tax rate went down, okay? And that first budget that I constructed, the board was adamant that we would stay at a revenue neutral, because they knew that the economy was bad and people could hardly pay their taxes as it was. And so the board left the tax rate right at revenue neutral, meaning whatever, you know, all things being equal, whatever levy was sitting there in the '90, '10 year, they were going to keep the levy the same, they had to drop the rate, okay? The next year, county was nearly broke, and there was hardly enough to make it, and we were in trouble with LGC, and Sharon Edmondson was my best friend. She would come visit me on a consistent basis, okay? And we increased, they took a big hit on taxes and they increased it four cents, or three and a half cents, okay? And basically, that board said, you know what, we know we've got to start repairing things, and we know we got to start doing some things that we need, that's been put off, and we're going to take the bite, and they took it up to 44. They left it solid at 44 for '12, '13. In '13, '14, the Sheriff was needing cars and EMS was needing an ambulance. And I think Connie, you were on this board, weren't you, and probably Keith? And so we took another bite and we went up two cents, and the public was okay with it because we explained to the public that you really don't want to be sitting up at the, at most Tacoma Gap with a heart attack and the ambulance is laying on the side of the road. And at that point, they were actually using a mechanic to ride with them because the hurdle was going out every time they'd climb the mountain, okay? Then, in order to maintain the debt service for the ambulance and the cars this last budget year, the board kept it at 46, okay? All right, so, there's your history. So basically, as of right now, this budget year, the budget has been set at four, basically four and a half cents above revenue neutral. All right, the next part of this, you've got your levy at, this time last year, we levied $5,237,000, okay, in taxes. And you'll remember, and if you'll see up above, we're at assessed values right now that Irma gave me the other day, is at $1.02 billion, is our property value. Using the revenue neutral rate that I calculated of 52.93 with a 95.6 percent collection rate, then if you use revenue neutral, your levy's going to be $5,180,000, okay? Which, as I said before, it's about $57,000 low of what we had revenue budgeted last year. At 53, if you just round it up, you've got a shortfall in your property tax revenue of $50,000. And then on down the pipe, I've given you each one a mill, okay? So if you were back at, and I stopped at 58, because I just wanted to give you comparative, if you stopped at 58, where you were six years ago, then you're, it would create a surplus of property taxes from the levy of 439. That means your tax bills are going to go up. That means every. That means everybody's tax bill would go up some, okay? We did some analysis and Irma was gone today and she wasn't able to bring me over her things. And she had run some kind of scenarios of several people, including the board, on where things would be on your individual tax bills. I'll make sure she gets that to me before we meet again so you guys can kind of see the impact. And I want to have her run every one of these scenarios for you. So you can kind of see on a typical basis, looking at your own tax bill, what it would do to you. And then you can kind of extrapolate there what's going to happen to your constituents, okay? Because remember the other night, we said, this is the revenue of last resort. And when I build my budget, this is the last number I plug in. Okay, I've plugged in at revenue neutral, okay? So the four hundred, or three hundred and forty five thousand is if you ran a revenue neutral, okay?
My property taxes at fifty six cents stay the same.
Because your value went down.
Yes.
So, so it'd be good to look at all of those. It is, and I think it'll be really, before you make any final decisions, it's going to be good. And we may want to pull some other just typical taxpayers that are in each type of property. You know, if it's woodland, pull some woodland people that most of their property's woodland. If it's lakefront, what's going to happen to our lakefront residents? What's going to happen to, you know, commercial residents, you know, our businesses?
And one of the things is, even though Becky's talking about neutral, the state will frown upon the government because they have put their tax base too low.
Yes.
Or put it on neutral because you have to plan ahead for anything that can actually happen.
That's right.
And that's where Ms. Edmondson will come in and counsel you on, you know, you need to instruct your board that this needs to be a little bit better than what it is.
As much as I like her, you know, I saw her on Tuesday and we talked. And she said, you know, I'm going to be up in Graham County in a couple of weeks. I said, you going to come see me? No, I don't need to come see you. You're okay, okay? And that's where we want to keep her on our side. And there's other impacts too. If we set the tax rate too low, then we'd get below that hundred percent on our utilities. Okay? Exactly. And then from the school side, when the county went at forty and a half, and Jacob can attest to this because he was looking at this that day when we went to that school seminar. They lost low wealth funding, which is kind of a backwards, you know, if you set the tax rate higher than, like, say, you get more money, which don't make sense when you say it's a low wealth, but that's the way they work it. So we don't want to set it too low because we're costing the school system, okay? And the school system, and when we get into the school request, you're going to see that they've, you know, we had a little family squabble there a few years ago about fund balance. And they've done what they, we asked them to do. They've begun spending that impact aid money down and spending that fund balance down to where now, you know, our fund balance is much healthier than their fund balance, okay?
And it was lower.
Yeah. It was lower at that point during the squabble.
Yeah.
You know, it was like they had more money than we had, okay? So we want to be good stewards for the education system. And we want to be good stewards for, for our, you know, because they're doing everything we've asked them to do. We want to reciprocate and give them that. And I've got Lester working on, you know, and I'm going to send him some new scenarios and see if he can get the state to help him calculate what would happen to our low wealth. So he's kind of on track to help me with that, okay? But that's kind of how it, how it works, so, you know, we got to be careful. We got to be judicious there. The next neutral, but one thing is to kind of bear in mind, with our tax base where it is, every time we assess one mill or one cent, it's equal to ninety seven thousand eight hundred and sixty nine dollars. So every time we start talking about, well, what would one more cent on the tax rate mean roughly ninety eight thousand? Okay, but I like to be exact as much as I can, okay?
And it's also important to keep in mind that, you know, whenever you're talking to folks in other areas and other communities, I mean, one cent on the meal rate in Graham County is about ninety eight thousand. If you look, if you compare that to our neighbors in Jackson County, that, it's a million.
And there's counties over me.
Yes, I mean, there's a huge disparity of what one cent is, you know, and so that creates a very different scenario whenever you're discussing tax base and ability to contribute and pay a lot of times.
Well, you know, I live in Cherokee County, so my tax rate over there is like fifty two cents. But then they assess a fire tax on top of that. And then they assess like a sanitation charge on top of that. They got to pay for that landfill. It's about twenty years old now. And so by the end of the day, I'm paying probably about fifty eight, fifty nine cents on the mill. So, you know, it adds up real quick. I think I pay about eleven hundred dollars a year in property taxes in Cherokee County. Jacob asked me on the next page, just to estimate kind of what our fund balance was. And he asked me off the fly and I was like, I don't know what our fund balance is. He caught me at a bad moment. I was really stressed out earlier today. But I got it for you. Now, this is our available fund balance. Our total fund balance last year was around six million, okay? But there's a whole lot of restrictions in there. Our available fund balance as of June thirty, and I've got a typo here, fourteen, was four point eight million dollars, okay? And when I took that ratio, because the first thing that Sharon Edmondson looks at, and she looks at my audit, or our audit, she takes a ratio and she says, what's the fund balance against your total expenditures? And it was at thirty three percent this past, this past audit year. So we were just underneath the magic number of thirty five percent because for governments of our size, they like to see, they tend to say that you're pretty healthy if you're at thirty five percent, okay? Now, right now, we've got a surplus, but it's, it's like sucking air right now. I mean, we're getting few property taxes in. When you, when I talk with you next Tuesday, you're going to be astounded at how quickly it evaporates in April and May and June. So I'm guessing my estimate for surplus.
She's a big spender this time of year.
Yeah. Well, right now, everybody's afraid of me right now, you know? They come in, can we please, no. You can't have anything. But right now, I'm hoping that we're going to come out with about two hundred and fifty thousand in surplus. We had a million in surplus last year, but we basically used that million to buy land and buildings.
Did you put that million in here or not yet?
That's reflective of this, okay? This time last year, I would have had about a one point two million surplus, okay? So right now, I'm thinking we're going to end the year with about a quarter of a million dollar surplus. So we're going to have about, close to a five point one million unap, or unassigned or available for appropriation fund balance, which looking at what I'm projecting our expenditures to be, we should be about thirty five percent, okay? In available fund balance. Now, the L G C says I only have to have eight percent, but they don't like that because that's one month of appropriation, okay? They want it around thirty five percent.
It's a very little, small amount of money to run a county.
Yeah.
In case of a major emergency.
Yeah.
That's why with our size, they want it to be substantially larger.
When we got here in two thousand and nine, we were about seven percent. We were in really bad shape and so we.
It was actually as close to seven. It was not hard.
No, it wasn't really seven. It was after you.
That was being gracious. Nice round off number.
Yeah, that was a nice round off major.
That's when we rounded up, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. And so, you know, we've come a long way, but we want to maintain and we want to, we don't want to let your fund balance get so high that you need, you know, the property taxpayers are disgruntled because we're hauling their money. We want to keep it in that healthy range. So you guys are kind of, as far as your budget's concerned, you're in a little bit better position than past boards have been in to make it, to make it go. And I know I'm boring you guys, but I just want to give you a kind of where we are. The next page is maturity on our debt. And I've taken it out to two thousand and twenty two because that's when we pay off the school bond. We're in the home stretch really on our school bond. If you remember, we refinanced it. We're paying a lower interest rate. So we're hitting the principal quicker, okay? But you can see I've broken it down. We've got our V D I, our phone system, the Dodge Chargers. We've got some cruisers and, right now, we're getting hit pretty hard with debt on the Sheriff's Department. We've got EMS debt. That debt, it's kind of combined between EMS and the Health Department. That debt will be paid out in twenty one. The Mack truck will be paid out next year, or year after next. We've got the ambulances and you can see the drop off in the debt. I'm going to be paying two off this coming year. And then we've got the school bond and the Q Z. Our debt service for this budget year that we're budgeting for is at one hundred and seventy two thousand. About nine cents on the mill as debt service. However, really it's not, okay? Because the school debt, three seventy four eight sixty eight is being funded by sales tax, okay? So really, truly, if you take, if you back out the three seventy four eight sixty eight, what is being serviced by property taxes for this budget year is four hundred and ninety seven thousand, which is about four cents, a little over four cents on the meal rate, okay? That's what we pay out in debt this coming budget year, okay? And then projecting out, and when we finance the Sheriff's Department and the sanitation, these are just round numbers because I've not got final interest rates because I'm using like a two and a half percent rate on USDA, sixty three thousand five hundred that you're going to be dealing with in the next budget year. And then if you go ahead and go with D S S building, and the reason I'm putting this out there, you're going to finance it. We won't get our money back immediately, okay? From the point at which we get that construction loan, then it'll be about two to two and a half years before we see a, start getting a payback on that thing, that building. So there'll be a couple of years there. We're going to have to be fronting the whole cost of that building in our budget, okay? Which I just eyeballed and I just took a wild guess on an interest rate. And I said, what if, what if we financed two million dollars at two and a half percent, which is what USDA promised us. I will see what they come up with. Two million for thirty years, it's about a hundred and five, five a year, okay, in debt service. Of which, for a while, we'll have to float that, which is a little over a penny. And that's just stuff for you to keep in mind ahead, okay? And then just to give you kind of a separate sheet, what our new debt is that we've got to foot in. And it's on this big sheet, right, at ninety five thousand dollars, okay? So it's real important that while we're budgeting this year, we're thinking out here too. You know, we've got to think here, we've got to think out here too, on what's coming and how are we going to float it? And as I told Greg and Kim in the office before we came up, this is probably the tightest budget I've done so far as far as revenue projection and expenditure projections. And what I mean by that, there's no fluff, okay? I've known what my health insurance was. Okay, I had fluff in this budget, not meaning to, but I didn't have as good a numbers as I needed when we were doing the budget last year. So I budgeted high for my health insurance. I know what my premium is this year and I didn't build any extra in, okay? I took the bite for A C A for the most part in most every department last year. There's still some A C A that's lingering, like in the cemetery where we have seasonal workers that have had to take the bite this year. But for the most part, I was able to kind of bank a little bit on my health insurance not being as much. This year, I don't have that, okay? So when I'm looking at it, saying it's costing a specific department a hundred thousand dollars to run it, it's costing a hundred thousand dollars to run it. There's nothing in there that I can kind of reach in and get, okay? The other thing I did too, which I've done this the last two years, is if I'm in like an apartment, like my four H, when you see it, you're going to see expenditures budgeted for twenty thousand. Well, I've got twenty thousand laying in a restricted fund. That's, that money's going to come out. So I've made sure that I've pulled those sort of restricted funds in, those fund balances in, to make sure that I don't undersell revenues, okay? Because it's just as much a crime to underestimate revenues to the taxpayers as it is to overestimate expenditures. Because when I'm, when I'm saying, well, I don't think I'm going to get this revenue in, and I'm saying, then I'm going to reach in your pocket and get the balance when maybe I knew that maybe there was more revenue to come in. So it's going to be real important that we stick whatever budget we come up with, we stick with our numbers and that we think forward and think, do we need to make renovations and not decide midstream? Because I'm not going to have as much flexibility in this budget to say, well, you know, I may have it to where I could pull from, you know, I've got a little extra revenue I wasn't budgeting for that I can pull from.
And you've done it a few times this year.
I've had to, yeah.
We're saying is that's not going to happen.
I'm not going to even do it.
It's not going to be there.
Because I've tried to pull every revenue stream as tight as I can so that all I'm pulling from the taxpayers is exactly what I have to pull from the taxpayers.
And I want to say something too. The General Assembly has not done. So, I mean, this is based on, you know, we're still very restrictive with revenues and everything. We're not building in that we're getting anything additional or, you know, man is going to fall from the sky from the General Assembly.
It is, no.
It's not. So, you know, we'll wait, we're going to have to wait and see what and how all of that shakes out because that could in fact change numbers here, good or bad, you know? I'm usually not an optimist whenever it comes to how that shakes out, but.
In that regard, we just, we just have to budget very carefully and conservatively.
And that's how we've done it, one way we've done it, and this is.
Don't know.
And if, you know, let's say that if that legislation where they, you know, they talk about realigning the sales tax, if they say, you know, Graham County would get six hundred thousand extra revenue, the way I would only look at that would be for one year because I just don't trust the General Assembly.
Yeah, because they could.
At all.
Well, you've got the larger counties that fight it about that.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
But to me, that, I would never say, okay, well, we're just going to spend it. You know, that would be something that we would want to, to me, I would say, okay, I'm going to put that in reserve.
Because they're going to get it back some.
Mm-hmm. Now, something else too, I just want to mention, is that last budget year, you guys came up with about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in contingency. Part of that was, you said, you know, the sheriff asked for cars and you guys said, well, let's hold off and let's wait and see. And so what their request was, you stuck in contingency. I budgeted for forty thousand dollars in contingency, period, this year. You guys can change that. You can take it down, you can take it up. I mean, what, I'm not saying that my numbers ought to be golden and it is, you know, that's how it is, but that's where I've left it because that's kind of what we had traditionally been putting in there, okay? So there's not much wiggle room for these extra projects. And that's kind of something I need you guys to kind of know before you meet again is, what are the projects that you guys feel are the priority? And how do you, you know, how do we want to deal with it? How do we want to finance it? I told them in the office, and this is just my preference, because I know that we may be going out for some debt with, if you guys do decide to proceed with a, with a D S S or some building out there, I'm going to be a whole lot more tighter about, yeah, I can go to the bank and bar for a vehicle, you know, or an ambulance or whatever. Because I don't want to mess up a big project with an installment loan on a vehicle if I don't have to, you know? So I may be more apt to say, well, do we have the cash reserve to do this? And that's where prioritizing that capital outlay is going to be real important. And that's where prioritizing that capital outlay is gonna be real important. Um, but right now, if you wanna flip back to that front page, right now, I'm projecting not quite fourteen point one million in revenue at revenue neutral, okay? That's if you just stuck with the revenue...
Fifty-two point seven or nine.
Yeah, yeah, okay? That's if you just stuck with that fifty-two point nine, which I would advocate for Irma's sake, we would take it at fifty-three. Um, that's what your revenue you're, can expect to get. Part of that, now, it looks like a pretty good chunk on the surface, but part of that is about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars that DOT's gonna give us for two or three more transit bands, okay? Which we have operating reserve to make the match, that we can pull out of that little piece of fund balances for transit. So, we basically, with good prudent management of transit, we'll be able, it'll be a hundred percent. That'll be basically DOT money. But that's why your revenues jumped from thirteen seven to fourteen one, because we had a pretty good chunk of change coming in from, uh, DOT for those bands. And now, that capital outlay is in this number, that's three forty-five, because that's the hundred percent is coming from somebody else, okay? There's no money, really, truly, that the county's gonna be out, because we've managed transit well, and we've got about a twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollar reserve from last year we can spend. And we've not touched that. I know I'm going a lot. Please stop me.
This is not going.
I don't really know, and that's what I wanna hear from you. You know, I intended on getting these books to you like Monday or Tuesday, but the forces in the universe just didn't work, even when they work until midnight.
Quite often, they don't.
Well, it does. But you know, the, the, the good thing is, is that, you know, based on the old revenue neutral rate at forty and a half cents, and where we were at forty-six with that valuation, you know, we were five and a half cents over revenue neutral. And, you know, we may not have to be that high in order to do what, what we may need to do this year. Um, so, we're that far above, you know, neutral. So, I mean, that's, that's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
You know, one thing you're gonna wanna do, though, is, you know, automatically, in my mind, you got, you start out at fifty-three. Because you got ninety-five thousand in debt service to cover, you gotta add at least one cent, okay? And that was a decision, you know, when we were working through this last budget year that we talked about, that it's gonna cost us a mill.
Ninety-eight thousand, a little cent to cover that.
And we may have to adjust, but we got a rebound cut.
I'd really like to know Lester's number for the school.
Yeah. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Do you have any idea when you'll get...
I don't know. I'll call him in the morning.
Very well.
Yeah, yeah. I'll call him in the morning. Now, talking about the schools, just so you kinda got it in your mind, they came back with the exact same current expense, five seventy, okay? But they requested in... Have you got their request, haven't you?
By law, I have to present that to the Senator Clarkler. Yeah, then I got that. Yes, thank you so much. You're welcome.
Yeah. They asked for ninety-five thousand in capital outlay.
They have that attached. I don't know what they've got attached to that.
They've got their current expense budget. And they show how they use the five seven to fund, um, they basically, as we said, five seventy for current expense, they did not jump that up. Um, ninety-five thousand dollars for activity bus. We talked with them about the possibility of them, them financing the bus. Schools can finance vehicles. They can't finance anything else. If they can finance vehicles, um, and...
We would cover the debt service.
We would cover the debt service. We just threw that out as a possibility. We said, "We can't speak for our board."
What is their fund balance?
Their fund balance is...
That must be just a couple of little projects, too.
Their fund balance at the end of June of fourteen was one point seven six eight million. It had dropped from two point two seven three million.
It's still on there's two million.
Yeah. They had dropped it, um, by about, um, half a million last year. They spent basically about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of impact aid for capital projects out of their money.
Law fields, impounders.
Yeah.
Um, you know, portions of the AC units, which we shared.
Would you?
Last year, they asked us for thirty-seven five in capital outlay. They pulled twenty-one thousand of the thirty-seven five. They said that they would like that balance to be used toward the ninety-five thousand, okay? Um, and so, what I did in my, my recommendation, I said, "Well, we've got sixteen five left over, and if we gave them another thirty-seven five in addition to the sixteen five, that'd give them fifty-four thousand toward their activity bus." That's just my speculation. It's not set in stone. It's not, you know, what I, I'm with the board to decide that, okay? Um, but that would help toward an activity.
Six seventy-eight, that sounds reasonable.
If they get an increase in low wealth funding, what is that, what's that money restricted to?
I think it's unrestricted.
So, they could get an increase there, you know, based on what we'd say.
Right, exactly. And that could fall, you know, that could be a big conversation in your negotiation about capital outlay, okay? Um, they're gonna, they're gonna do, or they say that they've got five hundred fifteen thousand dollars in projects that they're gonna work toward, um, this coming year, of which they're asking our help for this, this, the activity bus. They get about a million. The last five years, they've gotten over a million dollars in impact aid money. This past year, they got one point one five three million in impact aid.
Did I forget what that state's saying?
They say they never know. There's some years, now, it's never been in my tenure have they gotten less than a million dollars, but they said that years before that, and when you can help me here, is usually about three or four hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's what they used to say. It varies from year to year.
I talked to Swain County Finan, uh, School Finance Officer yesterday, and she said they get about two million dollars a year in impact aid in this one county. So, that's another thing to be considering. You know, I am pleased that they are spending that fund balance down, because, like I said, we, we got more money than we have.
Throw that?
Yes.
So, how do y'all feel? You wanna look this over and roll it over?
Review it over the weekend and...
I'd like a few days to chew on this.
Set data, come back together.
Questions? And don't forget your wage analysis, too. You're gonna spend some time there.
If you need them, I have questions, I'll just jot it down up in that section. They'll cover it all.
And if you have any in advance of when to come back, if you wanna throw them at me, so, especially if I need to do research, then I can be better prepared.
I don't want to say.
It does.
You mean you just can't just come up with it?
We, we, we're willing to make it up, but it's usually not, uh...
Sometimes people ask me how much is something I like. I really don't know. They don't, you know, if they notice I can be a smart user at all times now, so, that do help. It might take me a minute to look it up. If you want Rogers or whatever, I can hand that to you as well. I can email them off.
Yeah. So, just everybody give me a thought, we've done it for all of the day. Should I do that?
This is good and solid, man. If you got a problem sleeping, just take this to bed.
This is coffee.
Yeah. And this is what I've slept with.
We're gonna be here about twelve, okay?
Okay, we've got a little bit more about the personnel and the others. Do we have a motion to go back in close?
So moved.
Same.
All right.